Welcome to this meeting of the South Burlington School Board. The next item on our agenda is to accept comments from the public relating to matters that are not otherwise on the agenda, and if we have any such comments, they would be in order now. Yes, sir, please identify yourself.
Yes, my name is David Cohn. I live in Burlington, Vermont. My older son, Dan Cohn, was able to attend South Burlington High School through school choice, and we're hoping the same would happen for our younger son, Stephen, who is currently in eighth grade. In light of the law change, we're basically checking to see what the school board's stance is on that and what you plan to do moving forward, and are you willing to accept more than one student? Because in talking with Pat Burke, you guys did decide that you're going to allow one student to be drawn out of the lottery to attend South Burlington through school choice at no charge, and is the school board willing to do more than one? And if so, what would the process be?
You address a subject that is of concern to this board and one that there's been recent discussion between our superintendent, Commissioner of Education, this afternoon. I haven't heard the results of that discussion. Maybe he can clue us in briefly.
I do have that on under my report.
That's actually in the report, that's right. If you could hang on, we'll get to it.
Okay.
Yeah. This is an item we'll take up. Thank you, David, I'd forgotten.
No, it's fine.
Anything else that's not on the agenda? Okay. Well, the next thing that we will do is to take up the nature of our agenda because there is one item that I think has brought a number of people here that we don't actually intend to address tonight, and that is the subject of our school nutrition program. So I'll let David explain where we're at with that.
Sure. Thank you, Rich. Let me just start by saying that I am extremely appreciative. There has been an immense amount of work that has happened by folks within the school district and also external. And unfortunately, you know, I haven't had the opportunity to go to all of those meetings. I've gone to a few on the internal side, but not really on the external. So I know there's been an awful lot of energy out there and positive work that's been done, and Wynne Goodrich has been at every one of those and has been doing what I would say an excellent job. My reason for wanting to have another postpone this is really based on, there's still what I would say a variety of questions that I have that I want to make sure that come before me and before Wynne, so that there's a direction that I feel like is really critical and important for the district has responded to. So I know I'm so happy for the energy. This is a very important topic to me. I think we've made positive steps to kind of continuously improve our program. The concerns around our current status of our budget and the deficit side of the things and the nutritional service program is a concern, and the board has charged me with coming up with some ideas and opportunities, and I've charged Wynne to do that. And I'm very excited about the work, but I want to make sure it's organized and presented in a way that I can thoroughly understand and support, and Wynne and I have talked about this. So we're excited to bring it to you at our next meeting. And Wynne, I don't know if you wanted anything else to add regarding that.
Yeah. We went into this for one reason, and we're coming out of it for two reasons. And the reason we are studying it is because there's been a ongoing deficit for a number of years. It's been getting even more deficient in red ink, and so the board charged us to create a plan. And at the same time, kind of the positive of that is there's no better time than right now to kind of phoenix rising, take that crisis and turn it into a positive. And the positive is to move the food service program forward. We're going to be hiring a new director in the interim. We've hired a consultant. Consultant is here this evening, it's Steve Marinelli, who has been just transformational in the Milton School District in turning that program around in a year and a half. The kind of, the kind of direction that we would like South Burlington to go with. I worked with a very talented external committee. I call it a think tank. With the internal nutrition services staff, I also call a think tank. They each kind of did their own development of future direction. We began to meld that together. We're pretty close, but we're not quite there yet. And so with that, next board meeting, we hope you will be willing to come back. This is a trial run, this is a rehearsal. The real one will be in two weeks, and we're very appreciative. I'm just going to coin a phrase that I've heard a couple of times. I'm going to steal it from Carol McQuillan, but I heard it also in a program that Louise Murphy presented in the library back in, I think, December, is this is the first generation of children that their life expectancy is not that of their, of their parents. And part of that is around health and well-being. It connects really well to our ends and to our wellness collaborative, and we need to turn that tide around. And one of the ways we do that is through having a wholesome and healthy food service and food system for them that we model here through what we present as far as food and the kind of experiences that children have in our school district. So stay tuned, come back in two weeks, you know the way. We'll see you, we'll see you later in February.
Thanks, Wynne. So our next scheduled meeting is February 20th, and this item will be on the agenda at that time, assuming without objection, my colleagues agree that we should postpone it to that time. And without objection, it is postponed. I'm sorry that folks turned out for a non-event tonight, but I think it's better to be, to be ready than to not be.
If I might say though, there may be some folks here who won't be able to be here in two weeks, and so kind of encroaching on your initial, are there comments from the public? I think people were waiting until this agenda item came forward, and there may be some folks that want to kind of put out their vision and hope for us for this initiative.
Well, let me say this to you, and that is if you can come February 20th, that is the time when the board will be called upon to make a decision, and that is the moment when your comments are up to carry the most weight. But if you cannot come on February 20th, and there are people who want to make comments tonight, we can devote some time to doing that. So with that comment, if there are folks who do want to make their views known to the board, we'll hear them at this point. Carol?
I would like to just share an anecdote because the board may not know kind of the history, so I'm going to take, if that's okay, two minutes to just share one anecdote that I think represents the building possibility for this action to be positive for our children and their education. So literally eight years ago this month, 35 people met at the K-1 project room at Orchard School when the administration and the school board called forth from the community to build a strategic plan. And actually, some of the people, like Sherry Rand and some parents actually who were at that meeting of 35 people, they, seven of them went forth to build a strategic plan. And they worked for two years, and one of the, one of the issues that we spoke about that evening was the issue of food and understanding the impact of the average American meal coming 1,700 miles. That kids, we know, don't all learn in the same modalities, and we have children K-12 in our schools who need more hands-on learning, and they need to interface with community and learning in place. And we actually now have more programs since that time to address those needs. But then the school board and the public adopted the strategic plan, which included then a farm-to-school. And we were, we've been a little bit, I would say, lagging from 2007 to 2010 in positive action, but there were little tentacles of possibility that blossomed. Teachers building curriculum, a principal at Orchard saying, let's, let's pilot a farm-to-school here, and then other principals wanting it, and now it's in all three schools. So I think that when the community understands that the school board presentation around food, it's not just an economic question. The issues of obesity are astounding when we look at how many children will be affected by their, by their lifestyle with the issues of how we're teaching them. And I think it's clear as we understand what's in food that our goal needs to be for our children, a food system that does not have food that we, I'm going to call negative food, the corn dogs, chicken nuggets, chicken patties, tater tots, fish shapes. You know, I put them all up on the board for 15 years, and the number of fillers and the negative effects of food that's coming from the industry and the chemicals in that food, there's growing evidence that it's affecting asthma, allergies, ADHD, and some evidence in the area of autism. So I would, I would urge all of us as community members to understand that, yes, we have to figure out the finances of it, and we have to keep in mind that we get one shot to give our children an education. And how they then teach their children and their children has the multiplying effect. And so the time is right to really do what's right, and I think if you see the swell of possibility that it's not just the food service, but if we rely on the teaching in the community, the partnerships in the community, business is ready to be at our side. We have people from a couple of businesses here tonight, and we have the expertise of other food system models that have been able to go from deficit to neutral and, and actually build by adding revenue streams. So we all need to be diligent about this. This is not an, only an issue of making the budget work, which I know is central, but it's also a very, very big picture. So I, I hope that the board, whenever you make your decision, knows that you won't be building this with just a food service without your community.
Thank you, Carol. I'll do. I only want to say to you about the finances side of it, that from my perspective, and I don't pretend to speak for the whole board, it's necessary that the, that the program fit appropriately into the budget, but it's not sufficient. It has to do more than just not cost us money. So that's, that's the approach I come to this from, and we'll see how we can make that work in two weeks, I hope. Louise?
Yes, I just wanted to say thank you for giving those of us who are not going to be here in two weeks a chance to speak. Basically, I just wanted to reiterate and reinforce what Carol said. She says it so eloquently, but it is a huge concern, and it is a very important issue in our community. I'm working from teaching the other end of the spectrum. We're doing this whole series of programs on the food revolution in the library, but it seems so critically important to me that we start these programs when the children are really, really young, so that at that, that is a time when they can really incorporate those lessons into their future of making healthy choices. And I think there are so many lessons involved with this, there, you know, the nutrition aspect, the health aspect, which Carol has just talked about so eloquently. But I do think one of the other things that is so important is that the, this is really a great way for our children to learn about building community, because it's about our local growers, it's about what's important for our environment, for the world environment as well. But I just think it's a very important lesson in building community, and I wanted to emphasize that as something I think is, is really important. And thank you for giving me a chance to speak.
Thank you, Louise. Nice to see you. Anyone else that feels they must need to speak tonight? Okay. Well, we thank you very much, and of course, you're all, whether you came for that reason or another, welcome to stay throughout our public meeting. We are glad to have, have you here, but thank you for coming. And with that, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is an update on the subject of the Howard Center permit to open a methadone clinic. David, do you have more information for us?
Again, just highlighting for the board, the community, that we have filed our necessary information to the environmental court. We're in the process of looking at our particular legal arguments that we'll be putting forward. And again, we need to do that within the timeframe that is essential. We'll be talking about that, you know, soon, and we'll be making sure we comply with all of the specific dates, but we're moving forward with the environmental court filing.
Okay. Any questions, comments? All right. Now that takes us to the superintendent's report.
I'll just highlight these for you, and certainly if you have questions specific to any of them, there's a lot of things going on. Safety and security, I just highlighted for you on access into the school. We will be up and running, for the most part, we still, with the community library component, there's an area there that we, is going to take a little bit more time, but we will be manning that area until hardware gets installed. This is between the community library out into the, into the high school area. So anyway, that's, this is where hardware will be installed in the front doors of all of our schools, push button and opportunity to gain access with some visual recognition. Diversity and equity, I just wanted to let you know, I mean, this has been ongoing. I have not necessarily been doing a good job just keeping you informed about some of the happenings. On Martin Luther King Day, actually, the administrators and myself participated, and actually, we had an individual that worked with us in helping us to deepen our understanding about what that means, what it looks like, again, deepening our, our level of understanding while we continue to work on figuring out how we move forward. Public high school's choice, which was up, came up earlier in a question from the public. Today, actually, I met with Amondo Villaseca and a few other of the agency staff and brought up my specific concern around our current Act 150 agreement, where we have individuals from, students coming from Champlain, CVU, Burlington, and Essex, you know, with the understanding about the current funding mechanism that's in play, basically that funding does not follow in our certain condition right now that stops that from happening. I identified that as a concern. I believe the commissioner will be rendering a decision or a ruling that may correct that. That's my hope. Under Act 129, the more global component of, of choice, looking at a mechanism also where resources, I'm going to use the word resources, follow the students. Currently, no resources follow the students. So that's going to be looked upon. To be really clear about choice, I don't know what action will happen this year under Act 129 through the legislation, legislative process. We're going to keep on it, so both areas are 150 agreement and more globally, Act 129. As Mr. Cohen indicated, that certainly has an effect on a good number of folks who are interested in their children coming to, to South Burlington, and we would love to be able to make that happen. So I would just say, stay tuned, but also be cautious of major change at this point. I don't want to certainly elude the board or anyone in the public that it's an imminent change under Act 129.
Mr. Cohen, just so that you understand the problem that the board faces, right now, with students who come to us through the school choice program, we receive about $300,000 in revenue. Without that $300,000 in revenue, we just can't sustain the ability to, to welcome all the students that we have welcomed in the past. And I don't mean to be dour about prospects, but I, I don't, I don't know how the legislature could have thought that they could let us get into a situation where we invite, even encourage students to come here with the understanding that, that some resources that help us educate them follow them, and then expect us to continue to educate them without those resources. It's just not a fair way to, to apportion the, the financial burden associated with it. So it is a serious problem, and we hope we'll see some relief from Montpelier, but if we don't have relief, I don't, I don't know what a responsible board can do along the lines of accepting the students without the resources.
One, I think, important piece to note is that, you know, we are actively communicating with our legislators. We do hold, and the board is present for Legislative Breakfast, we call them, and we generally talk about issues at hand, and this has been one that's been in front of our legislators. And they're very aware of it, and some are working on it. And so I would just say to the board and to the public, you know, it's certainly been brought up. I've gotten an awful lot of questions about it from our legislators. Board members probably have been asked questions as well, so it's definitely on the radar. I just also want to be clear about imminent change at this moment under Act 129, as I can't certainly predict, you know, what actions might happen out of the legislative process.
I will say this to you, you know, right now, it's a concern to our legislators here in South Burlington because of the financial problem that it sends our way. You're in a position, and parents like you are in a position, to make it a concern to legislators in other communities. So I hope that you will take that to heart.
Next Tuesday, Burlington School Board meeting.
Good, thank you.
We'll be there.
Thank you for bringing your concern to our attention. We think we can run a better program if we're, we're able to have a more diverse student body, and so it's not like we don't want to continue to do this.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, yes, please, introduce yourself and, if you would, and then tell us what you think.
My name is Zoe, I'm a senior at South Burlington High School.
Yes?
I'm just wondering if there's still going to be discussion about the nutrition services at 8:20?
No, I'm afraid we've passed that, that issue. So we're coming back to that issue on February 20th, in two weeks. But thank you for bringing your concern to our attention. I think that takes you to the next item on your, so again, your report.
Business partnerships, again, talked about this with the board, I think it's just important, and I don't just let it, let it go away. We continue to work in our administrative meetings on off-site locations, and we've, I would say, been successful at doing that, although I always have more verbose ideas around connecting with more. That has been an extremely positive part, and those of you who know the governor's message really, we didn't necessarily know what the message was going to be, but really about the outreach and about the connected work with, you know, pre-K through 16 and beyond. So it's important work, it's been important work to, to our administrative group as well as the businesses. We will be going on, help me, Wynne, on March 19th to Champlain, Champlain College, is really our first kind of higher ed connection, and we're hopeful for our continued, what I'll say, opportunities for the future. So again, I just want to keep the board informed of, of that work. Contracted services, this was a question I think that has, has come up, and again, just highlighting for you some of the, the services that we currently have under contracted services. I provided you some of that information, and I would be happy to answer any questions regarding that if you, if you have any at this moment. Also, we're happy to have Joanne actually accompanying us tonight if there are questions. And last but not least, just letting you know, the assistant principal search process has been ongoing, and they have narrowed their, their search, and will be having some recommendations that will come to me in the upcoming weeks.
Thank you, David. Were there any question, any other questions on elements of the superintendent's report? Comments? That takes us to the subject of the budget communication plan.
Do you want my memory stick?
No, I've got it all taped up.
So I think discussion is right. I know we're, I think it would be appropriate, if the board's okay, Rich, to just allow me to do a run-through of the budget.
Okay.
Presentation, it's about, I'm going to say, I got my administrator's laughing at me, but about 15, 20 minutes.
He hasn't got this down to 11 minutes yet?
Yeah.
No?
But.
So you and I will get out of the way then? So people can see it.
So I'll try to, I'll try to be brief on it. This is information that you've seen, but I think it's important. The cameras are here, some public are here, and I would like to just walk you through, and would very much welcome, again, your feedback. A lot of this is direction from the board that you've given to me, and I want to.
Let me have your, you have a flash drive?
Should be, I think it's weighted, actually. Okay. We're going to use this, because I got, I updated one. So what we have done so far, and again, I met with the Orchard staff on Monday afternoon, the Tuttle staff have been communicated this, this morning, as well as the high school staff. There are some changes in this presentation from what I shared this, you know, this past today and on Monday, because some of the data in here was embargoed until today, and some of the assessment data. So you're seeing obviously that for the first time. So this particular budget, I'm going to take you through, there's four different areas, and they're highlighted with the, with the symbols on the right, return on investment, city vitality, excellent, excellent education, and budget challenges. And so we're going to walk you through this presentation in that way. Return on our investment, again, important to note, our, our ends, our four critical ends as students progress through our system, career and college readiness. They are disposition for lifelong learning, academic proficiency, personal development, and citizenship. A few measures of quality, pulling out a few things here, there's many more to, to share, but I think it's important for you to know that in South Burlington, we have more presidential scholars than any other Vermont high school in 2013. And again, I'm tagging specifically academic proficiency in this area, or the attributed ends connection. Real-world design, big picture, and business club disposition for lifelong learning. And I've just found out actually on the way back from Montpelier and talking about choice with Pat Burke in the car with me, we found out that we have both the first and second place finishers in real-world design, they'll be going off to Washington DC. So again, a little snap for them. 66% of our students participate in academic clubs, music, drama, et cetera, again, personal development, middle, elementary, middle, and high school, participating in various other outside-related activities. Again, we have many more to name, but these are a few to highlight. Cohort graduation rate, again, in our district, we're obviously trying to get to 100%, but looking at South Burlington versus Vermont, you can see that we're 94% of our students go on and graduate. Much work continues to be on those students that don't, and many of them go off into other degree granting processes available.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, absolutely.
Do you want us to save comments or?
Um, whichever, whichever way you want.
I think in explaining the cohort graduation rate, I think you should make it clear that that doesn't mean that 6% of our students don't graduate, it means they don't graduate in four years. The cohort is.
Correct.
The percentage of graduates who started as freshmen and graduate.
Right.
I mean, it's a higher graduation rate, sometimes takes longer than four years.
Or through our traditional system, some may go off to other career, and may actually graduate within that same year, but not through our system. So there's a, there's a variety, but that's a good point.
I'm wondering, I'm wondering if you should include a dropout rate, I mean, which is very, very low, because that kind of also goes hand in hand in showing that the students stay until they get their education here in South Burlington.
Yeah, that's good. We'll definitely add that. Just looking at our students that go off into two- and four-year programs beyond high school, just again, quick slides showing that I would say positive progression, but 78% of our students go off, and again, that's not, it's career and college ready, and this is a component of that. Our tuition students, again, an important investment, we've talked about this tonight, actually, in our choice piece, very, very important to us, but I think also telling about people, students want to come to our school, our high school in this case, so 138 students represented in that number. Looking at some of the things on the return on the investment, moving from teacher-centered labs to student labs, professional development, systems that help us manage that, and project-based learning, again, getting back into the more engaged learning, technology plays a major component, and this budget represents that. Our South Burlington tax rate, looking at the history back from 2008, basically, again, return on our investment, our tax rate has been fairly stable throughout these corresponding years. And again, I think it's important to ensure people see that on their return on the investment. This is our investment in our pure, 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 per pupil, I gotta have to change that one. Per pupil expenditure. Our line is the top line, and the Vermont line is, is below that, and it's very clear that we are above Vermont. But I think also important here is that we invest additional monies. we are above Vermont. But I think also important here is that we invest additional monies beyond what the average is in Vermont. And again, part of this is that we see some of those results in our return on our investment. But again, fairly consistent line, it's proportional to the Vermont average. So again, this is simply highlights that for you.
And a question on this slide as well. How difficult would it be to get the data, or maybe you already know the comparison, to Chittenden County as opposed to all of Vermont as far as our per pupil spending?
We had other lines in here, but I'm going to take notes, and we'll talk, I think it's helpful for people to understand how our metrics play into others, so.
Yeah, I think it'd be helpful, yeah, if we could compare it to Chittenden County's.
One, now I got two, I can't remember those two, so I got it. Great. Other measures of quality, again, looking at city vitality, I think really critically important, I've talked about this, you know, we talk about in science, the circle of life, I think the circle of a healthy community is that people move here, they buy a home, they have children, they walk, they move into the education system, their children go through our system, they graduate, they go on, they come back, they have a home, again, it repeats. And again, I think that's an important piece on the quality of our city. And these are just a few examples of some of the things that happen in addition to not only us educating them in the classrooms. Other areas that are important to us, supporting our families, not just those with students that are in our system, but also the younger families, so our outreach, as well as promoting the various skills in the area of pre-K education. Our district initiatives, again, getting back to looking at our district ends, laptop, computers, or devices, I think are probably more important, 7th through 11th grade, looking at, providing support for our pre-K education and our triple E programming, response to instruction, wellness and resilience, business education partnerships, and our programs for the related to nutrition. Some of the community engagement pieces, we've been very active, students and staff with mentoring programs, our PACT folks, again, continue to be engaged and active, PTO, senior citizen, and classroom volunteers. Desirability of being in South Burlington, our real estate values remain high, and actually, I'll have some additional data, I shared just a snippet with the board earlier, but I'll have a little bit of that. Again, we're maintaining our home values in comparison to those around us. Partnerships with the city, city library, recreation, police, et cetera, very important to us. And again, I think people recognize that, that desirability, our partnership is a critical component. And then area colleges, again, we're, as you heard earlier, reaching out and connecting with St. Mike's, UVM, Champlain, et cetera, to really make that connection happen. This is just a little bit on our advanced placement, SAT and ACT results. You see, this is a busy slide, top left is total number of students, and then the number of students that have actually taken a test, and the results up in the upper box, it does indicate that of the 65% of the tests taken, students are eligible for college credit. So that doesn't mean that they all get it, because not all of them go on, but they're eligible because they pass. So these are percentages of students scoring threes, fours, or fives. ACT, again, just comparing us to the United States, and under the ACTs, also us versus Vermont and the United States. Kneecap results, and these are hot off the press, this is a busy slide, I'm going to go to a graph in just a second, but again, highlighting both the areas of reading, math, writing, and science for the high school, middle school, and the elementary. So the next slide we're going to go through is just show you a little bit about our results. These are percent of students proficient, and so we are in the blue on the left, and then Vermont on the right. And what you see is reading, math, writing, and science. Again, visual here that we are above Vermont average. Our kneecap results for students six through eight, again, reading, math, writing, and science, and again, writing is specific to eighth grade, science is specific to eighth grade. I also have some background information around growth over the last year, and so I will be able to share that more. I need to make sure, again, this is hot off the press, I need to make sure that the data, you know, is reviewed. And then looking at kneecap results for grade 11, reading, math, writing, and science as well. This has been also a major improvement for us this year from last year. Again, these are two different cohort groups, but looking at how our students have done across the board. Important to highlight, our loss of federal revenue, indicating what we had back in 2010, how we used the funds, and where we are currently now. Again, this just provides information to the community that our federal funds in the area of ARRA and federal jobs fund money, as well as the federal IDA money, is no longer.
So on that slide, David.
Yep.
It would be great to total the numbers.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, there it is.
Yeah.
You were too quick for me, you already got it.
Yeah, bottom right, into the zero category. We can highlight those actually, Rich, good.
Oh, it's there.
Again, these continuing on budget challenges, this is a positive yet a negative, we have changing demographics and how we continue to meet our changing demographics and students that come to us, how we continue to be, you know, providing what we would say appropriate technological support and investments in our youth as they go on and need to be career and college ready. Funding uncertainty, certainly what's happening with, right now with choice, for instance, there's uncertainty around how that happens, there's uncertainty about what the funding mechanisms and changes will be from the state into the future. That continues to be a situation that we need to be trying to figure out. Contractual obligations for all our employee groups is an important component, and that's also a challenge. Common Core State standards are an example of other challenges that are mandated programs that come down, that we have to figure out how to support, how to get ourselves trained, ready, and able to instruct students.
And to be just a step more explicit than your slide is about contractual obligations, the public should know, looking at our budget, that all three of our union groups are in negotiations this year.
Some budget, again, challenges, but highlights, our budget is increasing 2.09%. That results in an 8% increase in our property tax. The increase to our tax bill per 100,000 of property value is, would be $113. Income sensitivity law reduces the tax bill, I'll show you that in just a second, a little bit of some additional information. Non-residential and business tax rate increases 1.36, very, very slight. Other Chittenden County schools that are in a situation, and again, the board, again, I just put this together, and I say I, others have put this together for me, but looking at Colchester, Heinsburg, South Burlington, Schlot, Milton, these are increases that are happening across other folks. Total budget, looking at, again, has a total amount, tax rate increase, and tax rate in cents, and then whether or not they have split vote or not, which indicates a B. So we'll continue, there's some little added checking on some of this, but again, this is, was worked on today. External factors, I already highlighted the R money, totals, the 1.7, gone. Enrollment drop, 20 students, again, for every student, money comes via them through the draw from the Ed Fund, that's a $228,000 reduction. Health insurance increase in this budget represents a $600,000 increase in health insurance. Cuts in this, that are reflected in this budget, the assistant superintendent position, important to note that our, my direction is really to be looking at human resource individual, this is an area of weakness in our district, so that will be actually an addition, but there is a reduction in the assistant. Five FTE teachers at the elementary, one at the middle school, and two at the high school. Both, the high school and the middle school represents more fractional reductions as, that does not always attribute to an individual, because a section, somebody teaching a section, if a section's reduced, would reduce that. Other cuts that were made, 20% in supplies and field trips, deferring our elementary computer replacement, although we'll keep the warranty, so that they'll be warranted. We're deferring the high school gym roof replacement, again, this is part of our stewardship plan, it's still, it's not leaking, it's not in any problem, it was up for changing, but we think we'll be fine to make another year. Reducing substitute costs, and also, the board has made reduction in their salaries, so noted. Estimated school tax bill example, this is, again, I'm going to say, this is 2011, we do not yet have the 2012 data, we will get that on February 20th. So this example just shows you, number one, the top area says 59% of our community qualifies for income sensitivity of some sort. Household income back for 2011, $47,000 for a property value of 220,000, the tax bill would be 3,360, resulting in 1,332 if they were, when income sensitized. Important to note here, though, is that they need to complete the homestead property tax declaration form, and we will be attaching it, this will be an active link off of our website, so people can actually go and print it off, and fill it out, and get it turned in. This, if they don't do that by a certain date, I don't know that exact date, then obviously it would default back to their tax bill based on their property value.
Only if it's April 1st with your taxes.
Okay. So I'm not going to walk you through the others, you can see that what happens is you go up in household income or property value.
So you know the number of people, residents in South Burlington who are eligible, is there data as far as how many people actually?
Take advantage of that.
Take advantage of that?
Not that I know of, not that I know of. We know of those individuals that, that's, we know of those that are eligible, we don't know necessarily what the percentage that take advantage of it. And again, I don't know if that's a, you know, I haven't gotten the answer on whether that's a protected piece of information that we may not be able to get, we're going to look at that.
Do you know if this is up over the couple of prior years?
The percentage is, has increased. So currently, this is a, it's 2.91% on income, it's actually changes slightly, but on the 47 on the lower side, this year is 2.91, that's up from 2.7.
I meant the 59%.
I don't know over prior year. Again, I didn't collect that last year for you, and I would like to know a little bit of the trend history and trying to get that.
If there's some trending information, that'd be helpful.
Go ahead, Wendy. To-vote provision, again, reasonable budget maintains high quality of education for our district. The law requires us to present the budget into two parts, A and B, both parts are essential. Total budget, the budget vote is both part A and B, and again, I'm reiterating, again, that both are essential components. And then just an end that this brings us to, obviously, walked you through educational excellence, return on investment, budget challenges, and city vitality, and again, just some of the general goals about what we're trying to do in education here, certainly in South Burlington. March 5th is the vote, and we're making sure that people can register, we're going to be having, getting out information, actually, I've talked to a couple of you about this, and we're going to make sure information gets out and available to those that are not registered, that need to be registered, absentee ballot pickup, so we're including this information. We're also encouraging, obviously, like my son, who has already requested an absentee ballot from Washington DC, but that's an important component that our students, as well as military folks, have the opportunity to also vote. So we'll be making sure that. The idea here also, and I'll go into this about some next steps for us around budget presentation and information, will be about some of these, getting out this information.
Are we allowed to have the absentee ballot with us, like at our different locations that we go to?
Yes, and we can have it, and we can have, we'll have budget information, that's kind of getting into what I'm going to talk a little bit more about around how we make that coverage happen.
Yeah, I don't think you can have the actual ballot, I think you can have the request.
Absentee ballot request, I wasn't sure what, yeah. You can't have it there so they can vote.
Okay.
What we learned, though, from Donna Kenville, is that you can register online, so you don't have, you take the oath yourself online now, so you don't have to do that in person anymore, and that just takes a whole layer out of the process of getting registered.
So we'll talk a little bit more about some strategies, and some of you have signed up for different events, so we'll go over that in just a bit around getting out the word, and any other ideas or corrections you might like. So that brings us to the end, and as far as getting out the information, actually, I talked a little bit with Martin on this, but we are moving ahead with having display boards, I'm going to call them sandwich boards for lack of a better word, but we'll have budget information. I think we'll talk a little bit about the one-page quick information that could be taken, and.
Let me ask actually, a possibility of one additional slide that you might want to consider.
Sure.
I suppose it depends on what it, well, I think it's important information, that would be the trend, what we've seen over the last four or five years in class size, or student-teacher ratio. I think that's an important piece of information for the community to know in tax, in looking at the.
And having seen the budget presentation tonight, I think there are two comments that I have to, or three comments that I have to make about it. One is that there's a rather minor loss that goes along with the cuts, but it's an important symbol, and that is that the board cut is a total cut, that is, that the board members have agreed not to be compensated for their services, not that the compensation that we received was very grave, but very serious, but it is, I think, an important symbol of how seriously the board takes the situation. The second is that two of the losses that are represented in the cuts that are made, I think are very serious losses, and one of those is that the idea that we're going to lose teaching positions and lay some teachers off. And the third one, I can't let pass without making a comment, and that is that we're going to lose the services of a very valuable associate superintendent who has served us not long, but very, very well, and we don't give up his services lightly. We would very much like to continue to have his services, and we're just in a situation where with the loss of funds and the increases that we experienced, we can't continue to do everything we need to do, or would like to do. So I think those three comments are important for members of the community to know.
So, thank you. I heard kind of some Chittenden County comparison information, we had on an earlier slide, maybe some class size change information that might go along with the reductions at the elementary, is that what you were thinking, Martin, just showing student enrollment, or did you want to see it more broken down by school, what were you thinking?
I just think average class size for K through five, and if we have that same data for middle school and high school, I'm sure we do.
It's kind of a before and after type thing?
I would have the trend, I would have the last four or five years. And I know I've run across some documents in the last couple of days that had some of the past years, but don't have the current, most current year, or our expectations for next year, it should also include the expectations for 2014.
Work in what this budget represents.
Right, 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 right.
Good.
Will that PowerPoint be available on the website, or in some way can it be handed out to people?
Yeah, so this is, again, part of the next step, so if there's, we keep going back and forth, if there's other comments, I'm happy to do that and work them in. This is the sheet, I know Delana had emailed it out, it has a number of events, also have been reaching out to others that would be willing to host, I'm going to use the word T, for a gathering at their home, and so we're getting a few of those, but for viewing audience, if there are folks that are interested in doing that, letting Delana Gilroy know, and we'll make sure to resource that. I think also for board members, if you know of individuals that would like to host an event, please let me know, I'll make sure that it's staffed, and we go and visit. We would go with budget information, probably one sheet with some additional backup information. Certainly, if they wanted to have the presentation, we could do it, but it might be more conducive to just do it in paper form. We will be posting this information up, again, following tonight. We will be posting this information up, again, following tonight. Feedback from you folks, we'll have some added changes. We'll make it available on the front page of our webpage, on every school page. That was a comment that we also learned from the past and last year. We'll have the link to some of the other supporting city documents that will lead them to registration, as Wynne went through, absentee ballot information. We will be working, actually, the rest of this week to kinda come up with that sandwich board that would be, for instance, dessert night is Friday night. Actually, I don't know if any one of you are attending that, fine arts night. Actually, Martin and Diane, I think, are going to that. What would happen at this would be simply just a quick announcement that there's information in the lobby, in this case, about the budget, registration and picking up absentee ballot information. And, you know, two members of the board are, are available at intermission and will be out there to answer any questions that you might have. So working to cover those events, we've also been asking for any other events that are going on so that we can get out there. So let me, let me pause. You may have other requests and ideas, either about the presentation or about other outreach.
I, I have one other idea. I'm not sure when we see it, we'll wanna use it, but I would, would like at least to look at it, and that is, you know, we customarily talk about how much the budget increase will cost the owner of the average home. So we, in effect, we compare this year's tax rate to next year's tax rate for the property taxpayer. I think we should pick at least a data point or two for people who are income sensitized and say, here's what the, the increase will cost for somebody who has-
Was last year and-
Compared to last year to this year. What would, what would a taxpayer making fifty thousand dollars, who paid based on income, pay last year, what will they pay this year? So that they have that, that point. At least we wanna look at it. I, I mean, I, I just pick fifty out of the year, whatever numbers are-
Yeah, just to show that in comparison. We, I chose the one hundred. I, I think, I do, I think we did articulate the average home, and they're at three twenty-three, although I'm not so sure I saw it tonight again, so we'll make sure it's there.
I think the assessed on each hundred thousand value is equally effective.
It works. People understand that.
We, we just, again, last year we got feedback around, you know, doing the math increment. People are much, it's much easier to do the math, you know, that increment than three twenty-three.
I also think David on that revenue slide, the loss of revenue, one of the, some of the comments from the steering committee presentation were, you know, what'd you do to lose the revenue? You know, why did it go away? I just think it's important-
So a little bit more on the story for that?
And why didn't you save it? You know, that wasn't an option for us. You know what I mean?
Yep.
I just think that's-
Again, I, I, actually, it's pretty short compared to the high school group, so I-
I know, I was doing the middle school.
I've been rushing a little bit, and I've been speaking a little bit more in-depth about a variety of pieces, so that's a good point.
David, I just had a question, because I know that we're limited in the number of letters that we can write.
Correct.
And I just wondered, can the citizens' budget group, if they were so inclined, write a letter? And would that be counted against our number of letters?
No, no, that, that would be one of the citizenry, and that would be handled by the other paper, however they handle those entries. I can't say that they would absolutely go in. So that's, that's actually a good point. That was said, you know, I informed staff, community members, you know, at both faculty meetings, that if there are individuals out there that are interested to want to write on our, you know, about our budget, then certainly that's, I'm welcome to do that. I'm happy to give them information that they would like, essentially that we have available. I'm happy to have that happen. As I said, also in addition to, you know, reaching out, going to, you know, to homes, et cetera. The other part that I think is important, we, we've also identified, you know, reaching out to some of our frontline people, our administrative assistants, that often don't get to the, the presentations, and so they're often in the frontline where they might be hearing some conversation, and I'm not saying they necessarily have to go into the spiel, but could say, hey, it's on our website, or here you go, or what have you. Rich and I are doing the, the Channel Seventeen show on the fourteenth, and certainly anyone's happy to call in with a tough question for us. Rich will answer it perfectly.
And from our past experience, it's the softball questions that make people whiff, so ask hard questions.
And two years ago, it was highlighted that I was very warm. I'll just leave it at that, but-
Richard Nixon-esque?
Yeah, that's right, and I needed to be powdered.
Can I ask a question? This is to Emily and Sabina. Are there any initiatives going on at the school to register students who are eligible to vote?
Yeah, that's what I was just thinking about. In the, before the big election in November, we had a registration dive, drive, which was led by NHS. So I can talk to some NHS officers and see if they can put that together again.
That would be great, and please tap into any of the resources you think would be of assistance there. And I guess the other question is whether or not either of you or anyone else you could think of would think about submitting a letter to the other paper from a student perspective.
Sabina writes articles for the other paper for, from CDC. You wanna do something with that?
Sure.
Sounds like Emily's point, right? That's quite good.
I like the delegation.
That was very good delegation. Sabina's like, okay.
Well, we do, there is a committee that have, writes articles for the other paper that's associated with our school, so I can definitely bring that up as a personal article.
And, and Mr. Burke, actually, you know, to both of you, I know he's, he's got some plans to help, so Emily, I think it'd probably be good for you to just connect, and Sabina to connect in with him around how you can assist him in, in the efforts, 'cause that's a big part. He's done that for quite a few years, I think, around trying to, trying to make sure folks are, are voting and getting that word out, getting registered to vote, those that are eligible.
David, on the fourteenth, it says, I, I'm there as a candidate interview. I'm not really presenting on the budget. Do you see where it says the fourteenth?
Oh, yes, yes. Oh, did I pick the wrong?
That's really rich.
Yes.
Rich is the presenter.
I'm David.
I'm the interviewee.
Yep.
And Martin, too.
Right.
Are you two gonna debate?
You come in, you come in right after us, right? Yeah, you come in right after us.
Kathy?
Um, I just wanted to say that the slide that hit me the most and has stuck with me the most since that presentation is the one where you're showing our tax increase compared to the other towns in our area. I think that's very powerful, and it shows the hard work that you've been doing in trying to keep things down, especially when we're sitting right next to Heinsberg. That looks fantastic, so I don't know if that should be taken out and placed somewhere else, too.
Yeah, in fact, I was going to, this one pager, which is front and back, but I was gonna suggest that we, we expand this back page, include that, that data on here, 'cause I think that, I agree with Kathy, that that really seemed like good information.
I think there's also a need for a summary page that shows the voter where the increase in the tax rate comes from. It sort of sums up, you know, here's the increase in our costs. Here are the cuts we've made, the balance of those two. Here's the loss of, of revenue that's coming our way. And so here's the percentage of your tax increase-
Kind of wrap it all up.
-that is, you know, that is due to loss of revenue, as opposed to increased costs, 'cause I think that's a very powerful expression of-
So kind of bring it-
It brings the whole thing together.
Okay.
I think. I mean, take a look at it and see how it would look.
Yeah, that's a good question, Rich, 'cause, I mean, I think we all know that-
Yeah.
-'cause we've been living with it for so long, but do we need to more explicitly say, when we say loss of revenue, I'm not sure everyone would understand that. When I think about factors outside the district's control, I wonder if there's a more explicit way to say that so it, you know, any community member would understand?
Yeah.
'Cause loss of revenue just sounds like it's something we're, we're in control of.
Funds allocated by the state.
Federal cuts.
Federal cuts.
Yeah, so I, again, this is in part, you know, what I, again, I probably shouldn't be shortcutting, 'cause I wanted this to really be what it is, a discussion on the slides, which it's actually doing quite well versus me going on my longer version of explaining. But we've also added notes so that, I mean, part of this is, it's, I, I mean, I'm not gonna be the sole person, so we have other administrators, and so we're attaching kind of the key point notes, and this would be one that I'm hearing. We will explain a little bit more about the revenue.
Well, it might be a keynote, but if it's not on a slide, I think it has to be visual, too.
Yeah.
You know, whether everybody says the same talking point or not, that's one thing, but if it's not explained-
Just the, well, the way we had that slide with ARA and federal jobs money, you think it might-
It's not clear that it's gone, you know what I mean?
On the slide where it zeros out?
I think it said, I think it, I mean, I think it was titled something like loss of revenues, and I think that might need some clarity.
So you wanna call it, you think labeling it federal loss of revenue and-
Loss of federal-
Well, I think the problem Elizabeth's addressing is lost revenue is a little bit opaque to the average person, you know?
It makes it sound like you're gay.
Yeah. Well, yeah, it sounds like we, like, we could've had it and we, and we let it slip out of our fingers.
She didn't apply for it.
Which is why I, I like it, and maybe it's, maybe it's a little unfair, but I don't think so. I like federal cuts, you know? I mean, they are cuts in that they gave us the money, and now they're not giving us the money anymore.
Well, you can always put cuts in italics and put a little footnote on it.
Yeah, explain in more detail what you need, but something that's more direct, that says, you know, we had the federal money and now they're not giving us the federal money anymore.
It's not longer distributed or-
Yep. Yeah. It's good, it's helpful. Again, I think Elizabeth said it, sometimes you're, you're talking about it, you, this is again why we're doing it, you can assume that it's understood by all when you say federal or ARA money or whatever.
Yeah.
It's good. Thank you.
And I just wanted to know, I, I called the city clerk's office, and they were expecting the ballots by the seventh, February seventh, so you can actually vote early at the office after the seventh.
I think we had that.
I didn't notice that up there.
Yeah, it was on there.
It said February seventh, I didn't see that.
It didn't say the-
Okay, but it's on there.
I think it's early, yeah.
But at this point, you know, people-
You can vote. Yeah, so we, we'll, again, we'll make sure that's verbalized and shared and, and formed. That's an important component for us, to make sure that, you know, we, we recognize that a good number of our families go out of town, and again, we want them to exercise their, their right to vote and feel like that's a really important message. So we'll be working to get that out.
Now, now, as far as the other paper is concerned, we get one letter.
Correct.
And one of them, the deadline is tomorrow.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, do you think it's better, well, we could try to put something together for tomorrow, or do you think it's better to hold it for the second deadline, which is the twenty-first?
Well, again, I, I-
We have the basis of a letter already.
Correct. I mean, I think my desire is that every bit of communication you can have, you know, is, is better, and it could be leading to the next. This is what happened last year. You kinda let off, I think Elizabeth and Diane had-
But they're just gonna let us do one.
Correct. Again, we can buy some additional space in here if we wanted to, for one pagers and things of that nature. Our web presence will be important, and pushing that information out through various sources.
How about the principals' letters home?
Principals, that's, again, part of the communication that we'll all be doing. Again, we have an additional list. This was kind of, you know, we have a melding of, of two that probably needs to happen, but we have a variety of ongoing communication that we're trying to do.
So should, so my question is, should we strain to get a letter in tomorrow? Or do we wanna go, is, is February the twenty-first the time we wanna publish anyway? I mean, we can get, we can, I can do it if we need to do it.
Well, the February twenty-first is gonna butt up against a vacation, right?
It's often the Thursday, and people are then, I just worry, I think there's a good number of readers that are gonna read it, so I don't wanna be the, the judge of that. But I do think that because it, it's often distributed home on Thursday, and if people are gonna be going out of town, it might, they may be going out of town on Friday afternoon or early weekend. It's likely with the busynesses that might be happening, they may not, they may put it over here and say, I'll read it when I come back.
Yeah, I'm, I'm thinking if we could get a letter in tomorrow, and then I, I mean, what Martin put together, I think if we're gonna purchase space, I think this is very effective.
Yep.
I don't know if we'd do both, but I think this one would be the one I would recommend we put in that, that next edition.
Martin, you have several copies of those?
No, I would do one.
I would almost wanna do both sides, because it, the page that compares us to other-
It's updated.
Oh, if it, if that's on there, yes.
Yeah, 'cause he's putting that on the, the other side of those.
The other commander.
Well, this is on there, too.
It's a, it's a, we can insert.
Insert, yeah.
Which might be good. Along with the principal letters, the, I'm listening to PTO, we can send out information to their-
Yes.
Yeah.
So, so Shawnee, it's a good, again, PTOs are part of our, our upcoming meetings, and I think that's perfect where we can either provide example of information and, and maybe what you could put out. The PTO certainly can put out, you know, their own message, supporting, supporting or whatever you wish to do with that communication, as to you. So I know we have, our first PTO meeting is at Orchard this coming Monday, and so that, that's, that's happening, where, again, we have a whole series of them. And again, if there are other events that you know of or gatherings, please let us know.
And, and as far as this document here, I, I've had some parents who have expressed interest in being involved in getting the vote out. For instance, somebody wants to, there's gonna be a rec department basketball this Saturday and wants to work on registration and such. So I'd like to finalize this and get copies of this and the registration form for voting and the required form for getting a ballot to this person. I did, is, anybody see a problem with using, letting just whoever in the public distribute?
No, I wonder if it shouldn't have a, well, we, heading, though.
We, we can do that.
Yeah, it has a heading, but it didn't work out very well. No, it does.
Oh, yeah. We can enlarge that.
It does need a heading. It does need a heading better.
So-
I agree.
Martin, I think it's, it's a good idea. We've had, we had these last year, kind of as handouts, but those that are interested, we can make copies for them, have a packet, and we're gonna have a couple of those sandwich boards, I'll call them sandwich boards, whatever you wanna call them, display boards where there'll be other information. So for instance, at dessert night, we'll have that information, we'll almost, the pockets where you can just get the information. So we can have that available, or, again, not, everybody may wanna make a, you know, print them out and bring them to an event like basketball, but we could have a, you know, stack of fifty or something like that with, they could take with them. So if you have a contact, I would say back to Delina. We'll make sure that we connect with them and say, you know, how can we get this information to you?
Right, right.
Fine.
Okay. And, and I guess to, to, I'd like to try to finalize this then over the next twenty-four hours, especially if we're gonna be sending it to the other paper as well. The, the things that, from your presentation, that I think we should add are, first of all, what Kathy mentioned, the comparison of the other communities, that, that slide, that information. Also, I-
I don't see how you're gonna do that on the-
Well, on, on this, on the back side.
Oh, I thought we were talking about doing this as a one-page, two-sided insert.
It's a one-page, two-sided idea for, for handing out to people.
Yeah.
You know, whether we have this at all, this second page-
That goes to the other paper.
To the other paper. I don't know that that's, part's necessary. I'm thinking of this being handed out. But, but the two other things I think would be nice in, in this first page, one is the data as far as, it could even be a one-liner, as far as the trend in class size. Like, 'cause I think-
We should look at that first.
Well, yeah, I mean, we'll have to see what, I mean, maybe there's not a good story to tell, or maybe there's not a trend, maybe it's been holding-
They're increasing. They're increasing-
Right.
In class size.
Presumably, and that, that's something that I think is an important data point, and I think people recognize things are difficult right now, and in fact, we are letting class recognize things are difficult right now, and in fact, we are letting class sizes get a little bigger to to address that. And I don't think that's a bad thing necessarily. Uh, the other is the income sensitivity. Having a little more explanation of income sensitivity, particularly to let people, I didn't realize that there had to be this form filled out. I'd be, I just haven't had.
Again, that wasn't included in what I sent you on the first round of our presentation. You know, we've we've added things and I alluded to that. So the income sensitivity was new information from what I initially had sent you that you used, you know, with us.
Yeah, I'm just saying, I I think that that's an important piece of information that people should understand that if they want to take advantage of this. May- maybe everybody knows this, but when I see fifty-nine percent eligible, presumably they're all taking advantage.
How to get the form, um. Yeah, I don't know how you want to approach that. I think I agree with you about indicating income, those that are income sensitized. Um, those folks may not necess, I mean, you may be, this may inform them to say, hmm, I wonder if I'm eligible and I'll go here to this link to get it.
Well, here here's, here's one possibility is is it can be added in the estimated tax information. And we can get what the median income is for South Burlington. Uh, and it could be a lo, just a one-liner that says expected income sensitized payment or whatever. Tax for somebody making sixty-four thousand dollars uh under income sensitivity, whatever that is. And then perhaps, yeah, somehow it has to be linked to an explanation.
With that, I thought about trying to do that, again, in in our work, what I chose to do is just kind of give it the way it was in eleven. Forty-seven to the to the ninety on income, just showing that range and that they're eligible for income sensitivity. I I worry sometimes about putting out, you know, the exact amounts, but um I totally agree to try to get some added information on income sensitivity. I don't necess, and I don't want to confuse the reader. It, this is one of those areas that a lot of people, if they haven't been part of it, and the declaration form to go and fill it out, it becomes a little, very quickly overwhelming. So.
My impression, um, from listening to public discussion about the uh, the funding formula from the state is that a percentage of people who claim income sensitivity is very, very high. The people who are eligible, people are taking.
Okay, well, then then it's not that, I mean, if that's.
It's not like this is forty percent or something. When, do you have something on that?
Yeah. When they submit their tax and they send in the home set declaration, it automatically calculates your tax bill. So when you get billed, it's not a question of taking it or not, you just get it.
Okay, alright, so that's not.
It used to be that you got a rebate after the fact, and now it's just automatic.
This is a nice process.
Yeah, I just looked it up just to, so it's in your forms filed by April fifteenth, but you actually can file up to October fifteenth. You pay a fifteen dollar penalty. Um, and after that, if you didn't file by October fifteenth, you would be ineligible. There's actually a second chance if somehow you missed it, um, you know, by the April fifteenth, but it should be within your tax forms, you know, in your Vermont packet.
Well, Martin, to that end, do you think just a footnote that kind of says fifty-nine percent of South Burlington residents are eligible for income sen, or el, eligible for income sensitivity, you know, therefore and the opportunity to reduce the tax bill or some, is there something like?
Well, I mean, I think you could say, if the system were simpler, because there's two, there's still two tiers left, right?
Two tiers.
There's two tiers of of tax uh relief that you get. It used to be below forty-seven thousand, you got two point nine percent.
At forty-seven thousand, your combined municipal and school tax won't exceed five percent. After that, it's just school tax incrementally to three point five percent. Your municipal tax is still separate. And so folks need to know that you're gonna get a tax bill with it as one number. They just need to know that we're not lying to them, municipal doesn't get that same sensitivity.
So, uh, I was, I was just thinking about, it would be great if we could say, and I don't think it's this simple. If you make less than fifty thousand dollars a year, your tax obligation will not exceed two point nine percent of your income. That's too simple, but that would be meaningful to people. I don't know if there's a version of that that we could say.
I mean, I think what, I mean, from my perspective stepping back, what would, what make, what we want to do is number one, inform that of the voters in South Burlington, last year fifty-nine percent are income sensitized. If you want information about income sensitivity, if your salary is between or in the ranges of fifty to, it's likely you qualify, you know, you could qualify, because I think you want to be careful not to say you absolutely do, but you could qualify for income sensitivity, go here.
What about this? We we had at, at least through one election, an income sensitivity calculator on our website. Can we do that again?
We can, but the problem is it's not available to us, the new data, until the twentieth.
Of February.
Of February. So again, this is our, kind of our, what I would say reactive piece, so.
Well, and I'm, yeah, I'm looking at it and saying, I mean, you know, I think a community member's gonna look at, how are my taxes gonna be affected? How's my tax bill gonna be affected? And if there's just some kind of caveat in there around a reminder that almost sixty percent of South Burlington residents qualify, and therefore it would be less than that. It doesn't necessarily have to qualify how much less.
And point them to where they get more information.
Can I say that fifty-nine percent of South Burlington residents uh pay based on their income, not property tax, under income sensitivity?
Yeah, I would, I would explain what it is, because some people might, if you just say income sensitivity, that might not mean a lot to people, but if you say income sensitivity and in parentheses, property tax relief or something to kind of define what it is, I I think that's a good idea.
What about just going to the uh, the highest income sensitivity rate and saying sixty percent, almost sixty percent of South Burlington residents will 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 have a tax base for education based on income. Their taxes will not exceed three point oh percent of their income, and maybe less if their income is lower.
Well, then you run the risk, then you run the risk of the forty percent saying, I'm not voting for this.
Yeah, I mean, this is.
I think, yeah, I think they, I think they know if they.
I gotta tell you, a lot of people don't know. I mean, I've already had four comments from people that I know who I know ha, are are paying based on income sensitivity, who said to me, your tax increase is gonna cost me six hundred dollars on my tax bill. And I'm saying, no, it's not.
Yeah, but Wynne just said that their tax bill comes.
They will know, they will know if they do their taxes on April fifteenth. Um, but they may not know it on April seventeenth, and they surely may not know it on March seventeenth.
Well, the the other part is, you know, the high school students and some of the uh business teachers are wanting to do a reach out to, you know, community members too. So the calculator piece is, I think we'll do it, but it's gonna be late.
It'll be too late.
And I worry about.
We could even, we could even put here, if we know we're gonna be able to do it, we could say, after February twentieth, you can calculate your tax on the, on our website. You know, we want to, again, I.
Yeah, if they have done their taxes, if they filed their taxes by February twenty, you have to do their federal tax and state taxes.
Taxes might not be done till April fifteenth.
Yeah, yeah. So I I.
In my case, October fifteenth.
I think the footnote is the best way.
That you're talking about it tonight is a really positive thing, and I think the highlight of this as we move forward to PTOs, uh, presentations and information, I'll get this down, it's whether or not, I think Martin's fundamental question is.
Yeah, if it can still be put in here.
And what I know about public, public communication tells me this. There's got to be a way to characterize the effect of income sensitivity for the sixty percent of our population that will in fact not be paying based on these property taxes. I mean, we, we've got to come up with a one-sentence way, and maybe I haven't got it right in terms of saying, your taxes will be three percent of your, your income or less, but it's something like that.
Why don't, why don't we leave it at this? Why don't we take a shot at kind of the asterisk underneath tax rate and say income sensitivity and try to have a one-sentence? And um, Martin and I, we can work on it, we can then push it out quick to say, that, you know, I say myself, but probably be others. Um, we'll have that attached, yeah, and see if this captures and we can tweak it a little bit. But number one, explain it, inform the range, and then where to go to get more information. As well as then knowing that, you know, some added support will be available for people that want, you know, have other questions. Makes sense? Martin, I think you wanna.
Yeah, no, I'm happy to, yeah, that's great. And and guess the question is, are are we trying to get this to the other paper tomorrow for next week?
No.
The other paper, it was gonna be an article that.
I'll get it out tomorrow.
With Rich on just getting to duty at the other paper.
I would do this as a, well, I suggest we do this as an ad, um, the following.
Right, right, that's okay. And because it is an ad, I think it's very important that the captions say, South Burlington School District Propose Budget Information.
And that's what I was wanting to speak about.
It needs to be clear, we're providing people with information.
And I'm gonna read what keeps us honest about that. Uh, it's in five sixty-three and it's under School Board Authority, but it it applies to any staff member who might use the copy machine, who might use staff time, uh, is that we have to abide by may, at the expense of the district, present informational materials to the electorate at, on any manner to be voted. However, such materials shall be limited to those that are reasonably designed to inform, educate, and explain to the electorate the board's position on the matter. So you can't say vote yes, and then here's your information, it's purely just information.
Well, we can't, but you can, all of you.
That's right.
Individuals that are.
And we can as individuals.
Exactly right.
And you can.
If you want.
Another, another question, under managing Rish, should we highlight the school choice issue at all there?
I think that complicates it a little bit.
It's too much.
And and it's, there's, well, there's not real uncertainty right now.
There's no impact on this budget proposal.
That's true.
It's a big item though, you're right.
Just wanted to ask the question.
So can I clarify, Martin? Um, are you taking this piece off and putting that other chart on the other side instead?
This is gonna be on the, this side, but I'd like to have added down here. I would like this reduced.
Smaller and then increased.
And then that, the community comparison.
Cause that's so powerful.
And I would, I mean, I'd be delighted to do it, but I couldn't.
No, we, we'll work on it, Martin, and we just want to buy, again, I'm gonna get in trouble. I say we.
That we means to me?
Or Meg? Yes. She's silent in the corner. Okay, so, again, I'm gonna do, again, a final reach out if you know others that are in your neighborhood. Uh, board members or others that would like to have more information and you think it would be good, have them contact me and say, and I know that they're willing to come out and connect with you. So, uh, again, I think that goes for anybody.
Alright. Since I have to write a letter to the editor for tomorrow, I guess it's time to adjourn this meeting.
Thank you for the feedback.
That takes us to, well, really, we're coming to a meeting. Policies D six, I don't see policy in D six in my, my first.
It's not here.
Oh, good.
Correct, we did not uh get that information.
Okay.
So, um, that will be tabled as well.
Alright.
Although we've made some progress, right Wynne?
Yep.
Okay.
You tell whoever's looking at it, they'll, I want them to push that, push their pen. Okay. Well, better be one who's a, who's a good writer. He needs to write a short, he or she needs to write a shorter letter.
So, you know for your agenda for next meeting will be added. What's that? Correct.
So does that mean you're taking the rest of this stuff off?
Oh, Julie, no, of course not.
There's a lot on you.
So, in fact, the strength of a question is that the nutritional services, can you sort of let us know what to expect? Would that, would there be any kind of an action item?
Um, I think it's, again, it's a discussion, a share with you, the board, uh, it's the presentation of of information, in part what you requested, um, and then the opportunity for you to ask questions and and, you know, back to me um, and Wynne around kind of next steps. Um, so it's really an opportunity. Again, I I think given the, what I'm understanding, the desirability, we've got a lot of followers, that's a really positive thing, a lot of positive energy. Um, it's likely you're gonna have some additional questions, so, um, you know, I think giving ourselves probably I don't know, forty-five minutes is probably reasonable, it's a big item.
I don't know that this can be the outcome of our February twenty meeting, but I think the outcome that the board would like very soon, not February twentieth, is an action plan that will cover both what I call necessary and sufficient. That is, a plan that will lead us to um, a, a nutrition program that pays for itself and does the things we need it to do for kids.
Yeah, again, that that's, the expectation is to.
If it can't be done, then we need to figure out what we're gonna do.
Well, I think it's, I think it's based on the crowd that you had earlier, I think it's unrealistic to think you can do it in forty-five minutes because two people spoke for.
Well, again, I think we'll have to, we'll have to ensure that there's maybe, uh, like we do for other meetings, maybe you'll need to have some uh, you know, some time and spokespeople, you know, signing up. So what do you think, Wynne? I mean, you need more than, what do you think, more than forty-five?
I think probably better to set an hour, but we're gonna have a prescribed, uh, three people are gonna speak as it, as the presentation goes. There may be some questions you have, and there may be, may be some points that folks in the audience may want to speak up about. My my vision of this is, kind of like when you do policy, you'll have a first kind of entree on the twentieth and then a follow-up to make a decision the meeting after, or we can do it all in in that one.
Yeah, I mean, I I would rather that you be provided the opportunity to hear it, see it, digest it, ask some questions, and then come back to the following. You know, with, with your thoughts and feedback.
Well, the problem with that is we're gonna have to be doing a budget thing if there's, that's, the next meeting is after the vote, right?
Well, again, um, your, your choice, your, your choice, if you think you'll be prepared, we can keep that. And we're gonna go through the agenda here in just a second.
I just don't think we can expect to hear an extensive presentation.
I agree.
And say, okay, here are the three things we're gonna do differently to make this program work.
And then say, go with it and go ahead.
That's just not gonna be realistic. We're not gonna get that done.
You'll have, you'll have some reading material before.
Are you gonna answer the questions we already asked?
Yep, those will be part of it. Actually, a lot of them will be, but we're gonna answer them anyway in addition to sharing the report, which also will be most likely provide clarity to your questions. Um, but I think that said, you're not gonna have the time probably to to make a decision for direction at that meeting, so I would, I would schedule it for the following meeting.
I mean, you know, I would, I would say this, David, if if you know that you're gonna be able to come forward with some recommendations that you think will do those two things, and it's just a matter of us saying yes, that's good.
I I do.
It's a lot easier.
I do, but I.
We may not be able to do that even in one thing.
We could, I mean, I can put action on there, but, you know, so that you're able to do that if you so desire. But I I think, you know, I I I know you well enough. I know you well enough, and I don't, I don't, I mean, I don't support that, but I'm happy to.
Well, we, I mean, we haven't seen the information from some of the follow-up questions, so, you know, hopefully we'll get a lot of that ahead of the next meeting. But I I don't think we could take any kind of action reasonably. Um, and honestly, it's one of two enterprise funds within the district. I mean, I would limit the the discussion and the presentation to forty-five minutes maximum. I think, you know, I think we run the risk of over-complicating the iss, the discussion by allowing more time. I mean, it's, the deficit's been going for seven years, so that's not new information. And, yeah, I just think, I, I think we could limit it and get, do fact-finding and whatever else needs to be presented around resolutions next week and then have board discussion and some action the following meeting.
I think that's a reasonable plan.
We had forty minutes on this one and, you know, that's kind of in the, you know, the timeframe we were trying to work with. So forty-five minutes, um, give the board the opportunity to hear it, see it, and then come back to the following meeting with some recommendations, etc. So, um, let's just go through that quickly, the agenda, um, the Howard Center will remain there. Again, that will be an update. I think that's important to keep on there. I I have no problem not having the superintendent's report in there. People will be fine with with what you have in front of you. Um, we do have a, a discussion with, uh, about Career Development Center. So I'd like to keep that on, but um I don't think, I think we can shorten that time up probably a little bit. Um, and then I do expect to have information on, on asset protection. And definitely the three-year to five, three to five-year financial, at least first, first, uh, first view will take some time.
It's too much.
It's way too much.
It's not gonna happen.
So, would, what would you like to take off? What's that?
You've got two point two on there too, so.
So, I'd like not to defer to two, you know, we've been continuing that one for. So, I'd like not to defer to two, you know, we've been continuing that one for, um-
Ever.
Or D six, I mean, uh, D six harassment of employees. That one probably should-
That's, that could take fifteen minutes.
It won't, but-
If we get good work, it should be, uh, yes.
It'd be three minutes.
Can we take off asset protection?
And move it?
Can we move?
Postpone it?
Mm-hmm. We can do that.
Well, or should it, uh-
I mean-
Be done by committee?
Oh, that's true. We could do it by committee.
Because that one that we've done so many times, that should be a five-minuter unless, well, we can keep it on there for five minutes, and if, uh, the committee, uh, says, well, no, there's some bigger issues here, then, then- Take it off then.
Can we remove it?
We don't have a committee.
We'll get, we'll get the straws afterwards.
With everything else that's going on.
Yeah, I worry about it. Committee's not going to have time.
Yeah, alright, fair enough, yeah, I would, I would-
Yeah.
Postpone it.
Who's volunteering?
Yeah, I wasn't volunteering, so it's easy for me to say committee.
So we'll postpone, uh, item seven. And, you know, I don't know, I, I don't know what dialogue has happened with the CDC folks, so-
Yeah, I would take that one off.
I would take that off.
I just, if there's a commitment, uh, let me just check into that, if I can reasonably postpone that, I'll do the same.
Yeah.
That would, I think, then give us the time for, um, nutritional services. We'll keep three to five-year, uh, financial plan, I think that's, you know, we'd love to just get that out to you, and-
That ought to be a pretty limited discussion.
It, it, that's right, and I'd like to have it to be a positive one, I'm not so sure it will be. And I think we're good. After that, I think we'll be okay after that.
Okay.
Okay? We're in agreement?
Yep.
Alright.
Uh, do we need to do anything with future agenda items tonight? Hearing none, okay. The minutes of January fourteen. Are any proposed changes to the minutes of January fourteen? Without any, without objection, the minutes are approved. Takes us to the minutes of January twenty-eighth. No, January sixteen. Are there any proposals to alter or amend the minutes of January sixteen? Don't see any. Without objection, they'll be approved. There's no objection, they're approved. That takes us to the minutes of January twenty-eighth. Any changes required? No? Any objections? None? They're approved. January twenty-nine. Any amendments to the minutes of January twenty-nine? Without objection, they're approved. Okay, we got that done. Consent agenda. I note that one of the items on the consent agenda is the retirement of a forty-year teacher, Cynthia Matthews. We should certainly note that-
So noted, and I'm happy to send it on your behalf.
Appreciation for, for such lengthy and wonderful service to this district or community.
Yeah, given the gift of music education to many.
Forty years, wow.
So I'm happy to send something on behalf of the board.
Yeah.
A little letter that-
Yes, if you would-
In the case such.
Mm-hmm. If you would write to express our appreciation, and with that, is there any, anything that we need to remove from the consent agenda? And if there's no objection, the consent agenda will be considered approved. Board evaluate, we don't, we don't need to talk about accounts payable unless somebody has an issue. That takes us to board evaluation, discussion.
This was on last time, just you wanted to have a discussion about the effectiveness, usefulness, et cetera of that, so that's, that's why it's there.
Did I make a recommendation on this one? Um, in, in doing so, I'm implicating myself uh, that maybe we do a subcommittee to come up with a recommendation on how to move forward on board evaluation, and I would be happy to participate on that.
I would, I would as well, if we can maybe postpone it till, maybe like April, or March or April, I mean, because I'd be happy to at that point.
Only we have room for our own agenda before March.
You're volunteering before reelection.
Yeah. Is that agreeable? Alright, so we'll have, uh, a committee appointed to come up with some recommendations about how to improve board evaluation, and we'll hear from them in March or April, depending upon how our agendas go. And that takes us to announcements, are there announcements?
Yeah, I have announcements at your place. Yeah, I won't read through all of them, but, um, I don't know if there's particular ones that you'd like to highlight, any of you. Lot of outstanding situations, we have presidential scholars that are, um, being identified, they're not been yet named, but they're identified to move on, we've got a good number of those. Uh, police department, of course, I said I'm not going to read through them, but there's some that I think are important to highlight. Police department showing, uh, some additional presence in our schools. Um, I don't want people, the community to be alarmed if, uh, police cruisers are around more often than, than, than not. They are, number one, wanting to make sure they're making some connections, and also learning our schools, et cetera. We have a variety of activities, Orchard Math Night, some of which are identified on our budget outreach information. Pact meeting coming up, um, Dialogue Night on the eleventh. High school students, um, have a competition going on, the, the State Dec competition. Rebel Chef, which I think was reported, uh, drawing a blank on where, I thought we already talked about this, but, uh, they were, um, also, um, top prize winners at the Junior Irons Chef, and they'll be, they're best in show, and they'll be, uh, continuing to do that. So, a lot of good things going on, many more than are on the list. I don't know if anyone else has any other announcements.
Any other announcements?
I have one.
Yes.
Uh, the SBA is doing a policy governance networking with board members and superintendents.
And what's that day?
The next one is the twenty-first of March, five to seven, not failure. I've been attending the last few, initially it was only for administrative type, and now it's, uh, board member and administrator. It's a very good, uh, way to network with our colleagues. There are eighteen districts around the state that are doing policy governance at different levels, and it's, it's a good chance to look at-
Yeah, and actually, there, there's a connect to that, because they, they are helpful. One of which might be, you know, the question around board evaluation, documentation, process, procedure, that, you know, that, whether one of them could go, or if not, we could actually ask that question at that meeting and say, you know, kind of the usefulness of the form, the process, what, what are other people doing, we could at least inquire about that for you. So-
If there's nothing else, is there a motion to go into executive session to discuss a legal matter on the grounds that the diesel in public would be substantially disadvantageous to the district?
The rule, second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? We'll go into executive session, we thank you, members of the public, for sticking with us this evening. Good to see you all. And for coming.
Start with it.